I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item I have on the agenda tonight is a request to address the board. I have one request to address the board. Ms. Courtney Kennedy of Mayes, wishing to speak on Seventh Generation.
Thank you. I'm a parent of three children at Seven Generations. My husband and I have always been best strong supporters of public schools. We believe that all children deserve a strong educational start and that having children from different backgrounds, learning together strengthens our community. We support the public schools in East Penn, including Seventh Generations, and want to thank the board for its hard work and its underappreciated efforts. Parents send their kids to Seventh Gen for a variety of reasons. You may be surprised at the diversity of kids and backgrounds there. I'm sure there's a stereotype of the typical Seventh Gen family, but I assure you it is wrong. There's really no stereotype. There's probably a few families from every stereotype and political stripe you can think of at Seventh Gen. Our school, Lehigh's Penn, our school is serving a wide audience and doing so well. Three years ago, when it came time to decide to enroll our oldest two children at Seventh Gen, I convinced my husband to give it a shot because I liked Seventh Gen's mission and I thought the hands-on learning would work well for my kids' personalities. I also thought this novel curriculum would help them get a deeper understanding of the community and the environment around them. I told my husband, if Seventh Gen isn't the right fit for our kids, Lincoln and Jefferson are great schools. We have nothing to lose and we have something to gain if Seventh Gen is the right fit for our kids. You see, it comes down to what is right for each child. Some kids will thrive at a school like Seventh Gen and some kids will thrive in a more traditional school. If Seventh Generations wasn't right for one of my children, they would take that child out. One school isn't better than another, but one school can be better for a particular child than another, and it's wonderful to have an option. Quite a few of my friends decided not to enroll their children, in part because they didn't want their children to be guinea pigs at a new school. I don't blame them. Our children are guinea pigs. At Seventh Generations, we try new things. Because of this, we've had some trial and error, and the school has had to make adjustments. There were growing pains at the school, times when things could have ended up badly, but we have a devoted staff and board who persevered. In the end, the experiment at Seventh Gen has turned out to be a great success. We're providing a wonderful nurturing atmosphere that focuses on the children learning from and with each other. We don't have high-tech classrooms, but the kids do thrive. For example, this year, we're spending some of our money on the first graders going to visit on field trips to local farms. They're going nine times. I love our EIC curriculum and how it's integrated. I love that all the students, not just the gifted students, are learning as if they were in a gifted program. I love our school-wide social-emotional curriculum called Responsive Classroom. This month, my third grader will be the leader of her classroom's morning meetings. Instead of the teacher leading, she will learn how to keep the meeting running smoothly. I wish I had that opportunity when I was in the third grade. I also love the weekly all-school meetings where each grade or class has a chance to present what they are learning to the whole school. The meeting is filled with music and laughing and ends with a message. Last week, the kindergartners, including my son, recreated stories they were learning for the whole school. It's kindergartners teaching six graders. I wish I had all-school meetings when I was a kid. You see, Seventh Gen is acting as a charter school should. Charter school law says that charter schools should encourage the use of different and innovative teaching methods, and it should give teachers the opportunity to be responsible for the learning program at the school. Charter schools give other public schools the opportunity to observe the trials, and we've had trials, and adopt the things that work. I bet that East Penn has made some changes because of Seventh Gen. I'm not saying that Seventh Gen is the reason changes happened, only that new ideas can be contagious, and Seventh Gen has been an incubator of new ideas. My most important point is that we should not be considered a threat to the education of children in East Penn. I know that Seventh Gen cheers for your success. We're proud when we hear about the National Merit finalists. We buy tickets to the excellent musicals, and we cheer the creation of new gardens at the different schools. After all, we are a public school too. But people get confused. They don't realize that we're not funded by vouchers. We have the same strict legal requirements and standardized tests as the rest of East Penn. We are a brick-and-mortar charter school. We are not a cyber-charter school. We have classrooms where the children interact with each other and with their teachers. We are a charter school that is run by a nonprofit organization. We are not run by a company looking to make profit like many of the charter schools that you read about in the papers. Fundly, we are a charter school that values our teachers and staff. Our teachers are paid more than most charter schools, and they pay into the state's teachers' retirement system. Frankly, I'm not comfortable with the idea of vouchers or the idea of for-profit organizations running schools, but I am comfortable with the idea of schools like Seventh Generations as a model of school choice, publicly funded but with oversight. If you are inclined to think of Seventh Generation students as outsiders and as a threat, please take another look. We are an asset to this community, not only because we foster new ideas and we bring people to move into the community, which some families have, but because we have decreased East Penn school classroom sizes in every elementary school in the district in the most economical way. Because even if the state doesn't reimburse you the extra 30% this year, which I really hope it does, you still keep that 20% of the funding upfront for big bussing in administration. And as more land in the areas develop, like the Jannel Tract, that may be developed with high-density residency, and more kids come into the district, Seventh Gen will help you relieve this burden.
Ms. Kennedy, could you wrap it up? You've asked about twice.
Sure. Oh, okay. Sorry, I'll do that. Well, I have one more paragraph. Is that all right? We also hope to collaborate with other East Penn schools. For example, there have been discussions in the playground committee about buying playground in a box and sharing it with Lincoln and Jefferson. I've heard talk of presenting plays and other programs for the other schools and creating a docent program at the 1803 House where fifth graders could give tours to other schools. This will come in time. Seventh Gen is only two and a half years old after all. And finally, I sincerely hope that each board member visits our school, sees how our children learn, asks questions, and before voting on whether to renew our charter. Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry I took long.
That is the only request I had to address the board. Seeing no others appearing, we'll go on to item three, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
You move in second. Does anyone have any commentary or questions about the minutes? None appearing. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Our next item is presentation of the Lehigh Carbon Community College 2012-13 Operating Debt Service and Capital Budgets. And tonight, we have our own representative to the board, Ms. Ann Thompson, who can be prepared to tell us a few things and answer any questions.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here, and actually, I have Larry Ross with me, who really is the man who knows all the numbers and who deals with all the checks. I have passed out a yellow sheet of paper to everyone. Since I don't get to talk to you usually more than once a year, I feel a necessity to point out to everyone some of the wonderful things associated with Lehigh Carbon Community College. From my own perspective, I love the fact that credits from Lehigh Carbon Community College transfer to Princeton and the University of Pennsylvania, for instance. So, we are running a program that is absolutely top-notch. And we are about to begin a totally new program in the state of Pennsylvania with the help of Bloomsburg University, in that we are going to give a degree program in applied technology. It will be the first in the state. And basically, the way the program works, students can begin at LTRIC, as you all know, with the credits to transfer from LTRIC to the community college. From there, they can deal with the Bloomsburg piece of things and get their four-year degree without having to go to Bloomsburg, I believe. We have the same kind of program with Temple in engineering, that you can get a Temple Engineering degree right there in Schenexville, if you wanted to do that. And as you can see on my yellow sheet of paper, it is a significant savings over the state universities and Penn State, and certainly over the private. So consequently, there's my little ad for there's good things happening at Lehigh Carbon Community College. Now, in terms of the budget, you are all fully aware of the governor's budget last year and the governor's budget proposal this year, and we are certainly fully aware of that, and you're looking at finances as closely as we look at finances. Consequently, in terms of the budget, as Mr. Ballard pointed out, like the budget is in two pieces, there's the operating budget and then there's the capital debt service and lease budget. Our budget increase itself is 1.5%, and the amount that the districts are being asked to increase is 0.8%. For the new board members, very quickly, the East Penn School District and all the other school districts associated with Lehigh Carbon Community College own the community college. So hence, that's why I'm here talking to you, because you're one of the owners. And when it was set up, the idea was the state would provide a third of the funding, the owners would provide a third of the funding, and the students would provide a third of the funding. In your budget book that I believe all of you have received, you will see that the owners, the school districts, are providing 11.5% of the funding. So even though funding is very difficult, be aware that none of the school districts are providing the third, as was part of the setup when the community college was organized. We, at our last board meeting, recognizing the governor's proposal, that the budget, the proposed budget that we had just passed was not work properly. If you have your budget book with you, if you would happen to have that, this book with you, on page two, there are some differences. In the second paragraph, where it says it's $94 per credit hour, we weren't happy about it, but feeling we needed to do it in order to balance the budget, it has been increased to $96 a credit hour. In the back of the budget book, it presents the part that East Penn plays in the budget. And as you will recall, the budget is not really based on just the fact we have X number of students there. It is based on that to some degree, but it's also based on what our real estate wealth is. So consequently, what we would pay would be different than what Allentown would pay and so forth. So if you're saying, how come ours is this and theirs is that, that's the reason. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Mrs. Thompson? None appearing. Can I have a motion as printed in here?
Second.
Is there discussion on that motion? Mr. Earnshaw?
The Lehigh Carbon Community College is truly one of the educational gems of our county, and it's a great opportunity for so many of our students. They can go there for a relatively modest investment, get an associate's degree, get a couple of years of college out of the way, then transfer to another school to finish their education. The new Bachelor of Applied Science, which is coming, is a great opportunity for some of our students who are coming out of LCTI. So this kind of innovation, I think, speaks highly. Not only are they trying to control the cost, 0.8% increase in the budget is a very modest increase, and so they've done a great job of controlling the budget, at the same time, investing in new programs and new opportunities for the students of this county to advance their education. So I applaud the work of the administration and the trustees. I thank you for representing us, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Rhodes?
I would also like to point out the service that the community college does for older students. We're retraining people constantly. I attended there when I was going to get certified to teach. I took a couple of courses there. I found a lot of people changing careers. I found, actually, I found one of the best educators I ever encountered there. I won't speak your name here, but I have never found a better teacher anywhere. So we have quality people out there. Staff is wonderful, and it's doing a service to everybody in our community. I just am a big fan.
Thank you. It's absolutely true that we have a significant percentage of students who aren't just out of high school, that they're coming back. Thank you.
All right. No other comments? Ms. Burstle, you hold role, please.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Palacana?
Aye.
Mr. Bogner?
Aye.
Ms. Hye?
I'm staying.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one abstention.
I presume that besides qualification, abstention, it's on the ballot, so. All right. Next item is the report of superintendent of schools, Dr. Kyle Seidenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. I want to remind the board that under Business Operations and Page 3 of the Agenda, item 3, Plan Con J, what we're doing is asking you to record. We want you to note that the State Department PDE has approved our submissions for Plan Con J. I'll let Mr. Glancy explain what the next steps are. Hopefully, we'll get some reimbursements, but maybe Mr. Glancy can give you an update on that.
Thank you. Plan Con J is the normal end of the Plan Con process for all of our projects unless we do a refinancing, and then we do a Plan Con PDE for refinancing. So Plan Con J is based on the final actual costs, which we submit back to the state, they review, and if there are any changes in the financing process or rates, then those will be adjusted, and the state will inform us in writing if we have additional money due us or we owe them additional money. So they've gone through the process, they've accepted it, and this is a formality that we need to do to accept their review. And then, some point in the near future, we should get an indication from the state whether we're going to get additional money or whether we owe them money after we've gone through this whole process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Glancy. Any questions from the boardroom on Plan Con J?
Okay. I want to give you an update on budget process. The next step is we were waiting to hear from PDE regarding our requests for exceptions, and to let the board know that we've received a letter from Nicole Duffy, Director of Bureau of Budget and Fiscal Management. And according to PDE, we would be eligible, and again, I use the word eligible, for exceeding the index by a total of $933,698. So we put in the exceptions, as the board permitted us to do, and that would be the total that we would be eligible to use. So in essence, that is our new index. And it's our intent to, I think, possibly hand out the budget books next board meeting, might be another week or two delay. But I will let the board know that we are working internally. Not only are we looking at appropriations, which we, I think, do, and I think we've demonstrated over the last several years that we have done, but I think a little bit of good news tonight is we're also looking at something we haven't looked at in a long time, and that is revenues. And without saying too much, I think we're a little more optimistic this year, so I think the board can anticipate some movement for some of our revenues. So we'll see where it all holds up. We continue to work every day as we get more information, and that is our goal, to keep working on this budget until we present in May and, look, at the bottom of June. So that's that. Also, I want to compliment the high school robotics team, the Steel Hornets. They have been invited to participate in the world event in the state of Missouri in April, and I'm confident that our kids will show the show these days what they can do. Curiously enough, we won first place in the New Jersey championship. Find out if there's a prick was involved, it would certainly bore Tom Threver or any mother friends in a lot of bragging rights. But you know, something else happened, and that is our students submitted the name of their coach, John Bradley, for a Compass Award. And I'm pleased to tell you that John Bradley did indeed receive the Compass Award, and it's so nice because he was recommended and nominated by his students. So John does a terrific job, and also I want to thank Mr. Val Miravel for helping find support for that program. Something else that we're excited about internally, and a lot of credit to Mr. Glancy and in the future, Mr. Moan, we've been working with our bus company, First Student, for a while now. Both Mr. Glancy and I have had experience with a software program that we think is very flexible, very timely, very upbeat. It's also, those of you who are software awoks, it's CIF certified, which means it will speak to eSchool Plus, our student program. And so we've been able to convince First Student to purchase Versatrans, and we're very excited about that software program. I think in future, as we meet the challenges of new development, that program is very good about taking a plan by a township and then incorporating that so we can even start to plan future bus routes. We can also do it, use it, it's a lot better tool for doing things like redistricting, looking at boundary zones for schools, and so we're very pleased with that. My understanding is they're going to start to meld the data from Edge Lock, and let's hope that the shift goes smoothly and so that we can use that, the new software. We're developing our bus runs this summer.
You don't have anything?
They're excited about it.
Looking forward to it.
And we really appreciate First Student making a financial commitment to purchase that software. We look at it as a real asset because, I mean, Mr. Glancy and I, no, it's just not, it's a planning tool, and that's what we're saying, more so than Edge Lock, the current system. I know there's a lot of things on the agenda tonight regarding resolutions, but I'm going to pass one out to the board. And we've been, as my Pennsylvania School Boards Association, to take a look at a model resolution. I'm not suggesting that we take a vote on this tonight, but certainly be working with Mr. Ballard to see if there's interest in the board, putting this resolution on a future board agenda for action. We would certainly fill in the warehouses for the academic achievements of our students, but I think it speaks to the issues in reading the newspapers. I don't think there's anything on this resolution that should be surprising to any of you. As we continue to work with our state legislature, because as we've been reminded by people in Senate, people in the House, it is their budget just as much as it is the governor's. And I think this resolution will put the hands of our representatives on how serious we are about public education funding, so I'll weigh your decision on that. And finally, I want to finish tonight by saying that this district tonight is going to accept the resignation of probably one of our more outstanding staff members, and a staff that is truly outstanding, but we're going to accept Bruce Denmead's resignation tonight. And since I've been in East Penn now five years, I know of a harder-working individual that serves our students than Bruce. What a contagious spirit he develops with the students, that playing a band, jazz band, and really everything that Bruce touches. He's a staff member that's consumed by our traditions, and you watch a master at work and see how students respond to him, and that's one of the things that, in my humble opinion, are priceless, to see the impact of one person on the students that he works with. And I can say this from the bottom of my heart, it's going to be very difficult to replace someone like Bruce while he's done with the band, and the marching band specifically, and the jazz band. Has been nothing short of remarkable, so we will miss you, Bruce. Mr. Ballard, that's the end of my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Seidenberger. Before I go to questions, if anybody has any comments on Dr. Seidenberger's proposed motion, please get them to me within the next week or so, so we can try and wordsmith that motion for appearing on the agenda. Now, does anyone have any questions for Dr. Seidenberger on his presentation? None appearing. First move to item 5.2 on the agenda, personnel, including the addendum. Could I have a motion, please?
For the second.
Is there any discussion on personnel items? Mr. Earnshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. I'd just like to echo some of the comments that Dr. Seidenberger made about Mr. Bruce Denmead. Two of my children have had the great privilege of being in the band under his direction, and I can't say enough about the good that he's done for our students in the program. We hear a lot about how difficult it is for students to make transitions, both from elementary school to middle school, and then middle school to high school. And I will say that because my two high school students participated in the band, that transition to high school was a non-issue for them. They started a few weeks before school with the summer band camp. They got to know students at all grade levels. They got known by them, so when they started on the first day of school, you were not strangers here, and they were not surrounded by strangers, but they had people looking out for them at all stages, from seniors all the way down to fellow freshmen. And that was a great benefit for them, and it was all done because of the feeling of community and almost family that Mr. Denmead strove to create among the band members. He brings a tremendous amount of energy to the role. If you watch him conduct, I don't know where he gets the energy, the physical energy to conduct the way he does, jumping in the stands to the tune of the music with the marching band, waving his baton with the fury of a samurai warrior, it seems. But he's an amazing man. He's done wonderful things for the program, and he's also a fabulous teacher of music. My children have learned quite a bit by studying with him. He introduced this year pull-out lessons at the high school, taking the students when they're able to get out of their regular classes for small group instruction, and that's done great things for the instrumentality, the musicianship of our students. Mr. Denmead will be greatly missed. I'm very sad to see him go. When I talked to my children, though, they said, well, of course he needs to go. His wife's going to be in Rhode Island. Where else should he be? And I think that's a testament to the way that kids thought, they thought first of Mr. Denmead and his family needs before their own needs. And it's because Mr. Denmead always put his student needs before his own. And so I pay tribute to him tonight. I thank him for his service, and I'm very much looking forward to having him with us for a few more months. Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Anyone else? None appearing. Ms. Burstle, you hold role, please.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Ms. Donchus?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
With regret, aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Palacana?
Aye.
Mr. Bogner?
Aye.
Ms. Hye?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye. All right. On the addendum tonight, we have item 5A. Motion to indicate the term of office and commission for our district superintendent. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion? None appearing. None appearing. Ms. Burtz will be called to roll, please.
Sorry, I was a little slow to raise my hand. My understanding of this is since Dr. Seidenberger's term of contract expires in about five months and a couple of days, we're required by law to make this statement that it's our intention to negotiate with Dr. Seidenberger in good faith for an extension of his contract. This is not a commitment on the board's part to retain him. It's not a commitment on his part to be retained by the board, but simply a commitment to negotiate in good faith. And if we both know on this, that's required by law for us to notify him with the proper amount of notification time that we would be seeking a new superintendent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. With that, I'm very happy to support this motion. It's been a privilege again to work with Dr. Seidenberger. And I'm very much hoping that we'll be able to have him with us for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Other comments? None appearing. Ms. Burtz will be called to roll, please.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Polakano.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Non-eyes.
All right. Now, we have other educational entities, Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit. This is Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We received in an earlier packet, the overview for the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit, proposed general operating budget for 2012, 2013. This is the only budget that the districts approve. It is a formula presented by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. It's subsidized by the school district based on the weighted average daily membership of students and the market value of the school district, not unlike LTRIC. And actually, there are something like 60 budgets that take place at CLIU, a wide variety of programs, ranging from special needs children, children with hearing disabilities, children who need help integrating into the community. But this is the framework budget that allows CLIU to operate. And the executive director there has made a commitment to keep the budget within the index. And if you go through the budget history, you see that there are some portions of the budget that have had significant decreases and some minor increases. But in all in all, it is a very well-prepared budget, and I'm pleased to propose it to you. I've only been sitting on that board for, I think, three meetings, but it's very impressive to me that the work that is done there and the fact that 14 school districts come together to create the programs really makes it possible for all of us. Because the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit provides programs that might be too expensive or too difficult for any one district to implement, but makes it affordable of all work together. So I make the motion that the Board of School Directors approve the 2012, 2013 general operating budget of the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit for the fiscal year July 1st, 2012 to June 30, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? None appearing. Ms. Burtz will be called to roll, please.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Polakano.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Non-eyes.
And now the facilities committee report. As you see from the verbiage here, that they're going to do a series of changes proposed. And in discussing this at the last meeting, we were given a background to the reason for a facilities plan update. It goes back to a student class action suit in 1989, Hendrix versus Secretary of Education. And the class action suit was because students with special needs were not being treated in what was thought to be an equitable manner. So this class action suit has guided principles for classroom space for students with disabilities in a least restrictive environment located near regular education classrooms in age-appropriate buildings. So for example, you could not have high school students housed in an elementary school building. The facility planning committee members include one representative from each school district, two intermediate unit representatives, and a PDE representative to create the plan. And so putting together what impacts us here in Lehigh County is that they are looking for a high school multi-discipline classroom building, if required. Just as we have, you know, populations with changing needs, of course, the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit does too. So they're looking ahead to see what the populations may be. One enhanced autistic classroom in Lehigh, Lehigh Learning Adjustment School. And here in East Penn, they are proposing to close an elementary life skills support at Jefferson Elementary School, but will open one at Zephyr Elementary School because looking at where the population is drawn from, more students from the Whitehall area are using those services than here in East Penn. So again, it's not precluding East Penn students from using the services, it's simply that the services will be delivered at another school building to better reflect the geographical needs. So I ask you to approve the 2012, 2013 facilities plan committee report that was adopted by the CLIU Facilities Plan Committee on January 27th, 2012. And in addition, the board reaffirms its commitment to the original construct of the facility planning approved November 1st, 1989, which consists of a series of prioritized inquiries to be considered in determining future locations of the CLIU and school district special education classes.
I presume you were making a question?
I am making that motion.
Is there a second?
Okay.
I would point out again that this floor indicated this is the result of a lawsuit, and we've been doing this for the past 20 years that I know of.
And it was not a lawsuit against East Penn. It was a, it was a statewide lawsuit.
Yeah. Any questions? Ms. Burtz will be called to roll, please.
Mr. Polakano.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Non-eyes.
Now for Lehigh Career and Technical Institute, Ms. Hyde.
Okay, thank you. I'd first like to start off with congratulating two of our students here at EMA's High School. We had 16 winners overall in the state conference for Skills USA. And we had two of our own students continuing on to District 11. And we have Quanisha Grant, she was in commercial baking, and we had Caitlin Benikoff in food and beverage service. So congratulations to them and good luck. I'd also like to say that we officially accepted Dr. Clyde Hornberger's resignation at our last meeting. I wouldn't have the privilege to work with him for two years, but it was fantastic. Really don't think the guy sleeps at all. I don't know how he does it. But we're also very happy to welcome Sandra Himes in his place. And you guys want to add anything before I make my motion? Do I know? Okay. Because I know it's all heavy hearts once again that we are saying goodbye to Clyde. I don't think it's the end of Dr. Hornberger. I think we're going to still see him around. Like I said, he's not done with anything. But I'd like to make a motion then to approve the budget for LCTI for the general fund amount of, can you guys, should I read the whole motion? Is that the proper thing to do?
Just say it as it's printed.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to read everything here. The Eastern Board of School Directors hereby authorize the expenditures of the Lehigh Career Technical Institute for the general fund budget in the amount of $23,97,730 and for the academic center budget for the amount of $1,374,290 for the period of July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
Second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Earnshaw.
Just so everyone understands the mechanics of this budget, the budget was adopted by the joint operating committee. And when we adopted it, what we really were voting on was to send it back to the individual school boards in Lehigh County to approve. There are nine county, nine school boards in the county. Each of them will vote on this motion. In order to adopt the budget, at least 51% of the school directors in the county need to vote yes. Over 50% of the Lehigh County assessed property values as represented by the districts have to approve it. So in other words, if five of the small districts voted yes and the four largest districts voted no, it would not be approved. And then a majority of the school districts also have to approve this budget. I believe as of our last meeting, three districts had all voted on it at that point. All of the budgetary numbers are based on formulas. There's, the operating budget is based on the number of students each district sends on a five-year rolling average. And the capital budget is based on the assessed value of the properties as a percentage of the, for each school district as a percentage of the total of the county. So that's how our particular appropriation was calculated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Burtz will be called to roll, please.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Polakano.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Non-eyes.
The next item on the agenda is legislative. I'll give a brief report and then we'll get on to the discussion of a couple of resolutions we have here, proposed by members. Right now, they're trying to call to the floor for a vote, House Bill 1329 on prevailing wage. It doesn't totally eliminate prevailing wage, but it raises the limits considerably on what projects would have to be bid on prevailing wage. Major construction like school buildings would still have to be bid on prevailing wage, but I believe the number is $180,000 for projects below that would not have to be bid at prevailing wage. So many renovation projects and small projects will get out from under the prevailing wage law. And I urge you to contact our representative, currently only one in the district, is Justin Simmons. But after April 24th, maybe we'll have two that we can contact. But hopefully the bill will be out before then. And we need to get something done, at least some prevailing wage. The budget hearings are ongoing. The education budget is not being received by either side with any great enthusiasm at the moment from the governor's proposal. I think almost everybody has an axe to grind one way or another with it, which in some ways is good, in some ways is bad. We'll have to hear what they actually do with the budget. But everybody on both sides of the aisle is promising changes. So we'll have, we'll have to see. So everything is still up in the air. The governor did admit during one news interview that he actually understands that he's lowering the amount of funds for education in this budget. But he's still holding to the line and was still held by Secretary Tomolos in some very contentious hearings that basic education subsidy is going up. Just everything else is going down, but we won't mention that, that part of it. The State Board of Education is looking at Keystone exams again. Now, there's some things in the budget about stalling the Keystone exams. But they just met and they're extending the current graduation requirements, at least their test proposal, through 2015 and 16. And they're clarifying that the regulations regarding the Keystone exams and graduation requirements apply to charter and cyber school students in addition to school districts and vocational technical institutes. So the way they're looking at it, everybody who graduates from any of these schools funded with public money, nothing about vouchers yet, but any of the public schools, charter schools, will have to take these Keystone exams. Although the budget is trying to scale that back to only three or four exams to be starting with. And they're talking about that for beginning in the 2016, 2017 school year that will begin with the class of 2017. And like I said, the current proposal is to reduce those for budgetary purposes from 10 Keystone exams to three Keystone exams. We'll see how that goes. It's again, subject to the budget negotiations and some other things. So that's pretty much it. We're just listening for the latest word from Harrisburg on the budget. And hopefully, we can get enough information that begins to make sense in March that we can actually do something with it. And now, yes, Mr. Earnshaw.
For the Keystone exams, I know last year I got two letters from the state that my then 10th grader and 9th grader were both in Algebra I. They both took the Keystone exam. I'm happy to say they passed. Not surprised, though. East Penn does a great job preparing our students for that. How many other exams are currently in effect right now besides Algebra I?
I think there's going to be three.
Three.
But I don't think they've actually done the other two.
Now, they have a field test though, as far as we know.
So Algebra I is the only one that's currently deployed?
Our field test, it's not really deployed yet because it's not a graduation requirement. It's a field test.
Okay. So the students were required to take it, but it did not, was not a requirement of graduation for the students.
Of course, it's a field test.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Donches.
But I had read that literature and biology, I guess, were the top three picked for the other two in addition. Just wanted to say, I'm disappointed, like, I don't know what reports we would have, but the government and civics was not one of the classes that was chosen. This idea that would be applied to everybody.
Well, there's a lot of question about all the Keystone's and their application and their applicability. So any citizen is welcome to contact the Board of Education, State Board of Education, and give their input. And I'm sure they're going to be getting a lot of input on this. Thank you.
I think, Mrs. Donches, you made a good point. And I don't disagree. One of the things I think the state was intending to do was to replace the PSSAs, which are basically about math, communication, language arts, English, and science. And so that's why they were focusing in those areas as opposed to social studies is more or less a match. Because still, we still are required to do those kind of tests for the child language. And until that issue's been resolved, the state needs to find something that looks and feels like a state standardized test.
Yeah, their proposal removes the requirements for Keystone exams for geometry, algebra I, chemistry, American history, civics and government, and world history. Those are all things that are going out the window under the current budget discussion. Mr. Stoltz.
I've echoed this sentiment before, but what a world it would be if we could just let teachers teach instead of having to teach to some statewide test written by a bunch of politicians. I think before we have high stakes graduation tests, we should make every legislator in Harrisburg take these first and see whether or not they pass. And it would be nice if teachers could just do their job in their own creative ways instead of having to teach these high stakes graduation tests. I realize the desire to have some sort of statewide measure of success, but I know Mr. Ridgeline was never a fan of these either, and I'm sure he'd say something similar. It was one of the few areas we agree on.
Okay. Mr. Barker.
When I saw the announcement, I was going to the math, and I believe it's current 8 graders, keep the same graduation requirements, and now the proposal is for current 7th graders to have new requirements. I'm assuming that's because they haven't put them in yet and they don't want to have people at graduation requirement that they already started high school.
They need a four-year sequence for that.
Is the expectation that if they don't agree to something and change the laws, that that will keep getting pushed out for that reason?
I...
The whole thing is...
I'm trying to sound intelligent, but I'll take a pass on that.
Any other questions? Legislative scene confused as usual from the Pennsylvania politics. All right. We mentioned prevailing wage reform. And Mr. Barker, I believe this is your motion, would you care to make it and explain it?
I hope I don't have to read the whole thing.
No, you can just refer to it.
I'll read it. Basically, the PSBA crafted a model... Uh, basically the, uh, PSBA crafted a model, um, proposal, a resolution to be reviewed, uh, basically to discuss the Senate, uh, the House bill that, uh, Mr. Ballard, uh, mentioned previously. It would raise the, uh, would be a modest increase in the prevailing wage limits, uh, applicable, um, currently they're applicable to anything over $25,000 and would raise that limit to $180,000. Uh, it seems to me it's a, um, way to save districts' money, give them more flexibility in, uh, construction and renovation progress. So I'll, uh, make the motion, uh, resolve the defense, school board directors approve the following resolutions supporting prevailing wage reform.
I am seven point one. Yes, is there a second?
Sorry?
Is there a discussion on this motion? Ms. Donches.
Yes, um, overall in favor of, and I did have some comments. I wondered if we should amend, um, the paragraph before the be a further resolved where it says now therefore be a resolved that the East Penn School District directs its board of directors. And given the conversations we've had before, I wondered if that should say the East Penn School District Board of Directors encourages the community to urge their legislatures or the East Penn School District Board of Directors, you know, it seems backwards.
I think the previous.
Uh, Mr. Bacher.
Uh, I think the previous resolutions have directed the President speaking for the Board to, um.
Send a letter out or something.
Send a letter to encourage the legislators to vote for it. So I think that's what it's getting at, to encourage the official board to have policy and get the word out. Certainly it would be good for residents also to, um, speak to their legislatures on the matter, but I think we can't revolve to have our, our constituencies do that. I think we can direct Mr. Ballard to send a letter to our representatives.
And that's the way I take this motion, as it is.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Not appearing. Ms. Bursel, will you call a roll please?
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Pollockano.
Aye.
Mr. Bacher.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Nine eyes.
I'll generate a letter and we'll send it out as fast as possible. Um, next resolution was, uh, put forth originally, it's a reform by Mr. Stoltz. I'm, I have to take, uh, the blame for wordsmithing it to try to get it closer to another resolution that was passed in a local township that sort of made the words come a little better. So if anybody has any, uh, problem with the wording, then it's my problem. Okay, so don't blame Mr. Stoltz. All right, uh, Mr. Stoltz, would you like to just bring this forward?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion. I, I didn't have any problem with the, I, I felt minor changes in the, in the wording and the spirit is still the same. And this was just a horrendous idea by the legislature in Harrisburg, not that that's anything particularly new. And, uh, if anybody wishes to take it out on its chief architect, Senator Brown, he is running for delegate to the national convention, so in April you'll have a chance to vote against him. But for now, I would urge you all to support this resolution and I, I, I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Sorry?
Is there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Rhodes.
Um, I think our mistake was not examining the law before it actually was used. Uh, it's a post facto situation. This is what it is. And then I'm reserving my judgment on this till I see how it plays out. It benefits only the city of Allentown. Uh, you could make that, you could make that judgment, but I'm not sure. I wanna wait and see how it plays out. Does it benefit the economy of the whole area? That's a possibility. I feel remiss that I did not see, uh, this before Allentown actually put it in action, but I'm going to vote no because, uh, there's nothing I can do about it. I wanna see if it plays out the way that you intended it to play out, hope it plays out the way, uh, our delightful Senator Brown expects it to play out.
Anyone else? I, I will make a couple of comments. One, uh, no matter what happens to the money, it's delayed at least nine months to a year before we get it. So to us, it's a hit in the budget this year. And, uh, the second, uh, thing is, is that, um, there are some townships that are involved in seeking whether or not they can, uh, take this to court as an unconstitutional law. And they've directed their solicitors to do that. I'm not suggesting we engage in any of that. I'm just saying that there are some people who are truly annoyed, uh, in other places besides the school districts. Mr. Enshaw.
Has, has there been enough clarity from downtown Allentown to know really what impact this is going to have on us? Number of our residents who work in that town and.
No, we've been able, uh, the, the, Mr. Glancy, I think you can comment on that from the TCC standpoint.
TCC has been investigating it. We have another meeting Thursday morning and we are still seeking answers to questions that we sent over to Allentown.
Yeah, so, so we don't know the extent of the impact at this point. In, in general, I think it's a bad idea, the legislation that, that was passed from, if, if the press coverage is correct, then it, the, the way it was slipped in to the appropriations bill, I think circumvented the vigorous debate that should, that should have been subjected to. Certainly, we've got the law of unintended consequences in operation here. The, I think originally people thought it would just be the taxes generated by people who lived in the area. You know, it would just be Allentown's tax dollars. Now it's, they're talking beyond income, or state earned income, or state personally come tax, uh, sales taxes, local earned income taxes. They're not talking, well, maybe it affects the tobacco tax.
Global services.
Yeah, services tax. And, you know, suddenly it's just mushroomed into this gigantic thing. And I wonder if, if everyone involved with it realized from the start how far reaching the broad wording of it would have. I agree with Mr. Rhodes though, the ship has sailed. We can complain about it all we want. I don't know that it's going to change anything, um, but I'm willing to support this resolution.
Any other comments? Ms. Bursel, will you call? Mr. Bacher.
I'd just like to comment that I, I agree, I think in general with the feeling, um, that it would be nice to have the debate about the merits of the case before they pass the law. And, um, I wasn't paying attention perhaps, uh, when it was passed, but I, it seems it was general, a, a general case that most people just found out about this recently and that's not the way to pass something like this that, um, has wide, wide ratings you can pass.
You would've thought somebody would've asked some of the people who might be affected other than Allentown.
They were afraid we might find out.
Anyway, Ms. Bursel, will you call a roll please?
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Pollockano.
Aye.
Mr. Bacher.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Eight eyes, one vote.
All right, uh, business operations. Does anyone have any, uh, problem putting items eight point one, two, and three together?
So much.
Is there any discussion on these items? Not appearing. Ms. Bursel, will you call a roll please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Pollockano.
Aye.
Mr. Bacher.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Nine eyes.
All right, uh, in terms of, uh, new business, uh, because Dr. Seidenberger has indicated that we need to, uh, talk about getting out a budget book for the next meeting, um, we need to get some direction to Dr. Seidenberger as to exactly what that budget book is to include. Uh, basically our staff is going, um, I won't use the expression used at work, but, uh, basically smashing into a wall, uh, trying to get all this data together on a very sketchy set of information and they have very little time. So we need to make sure that they can, uh, get this budget book to us in the appropriate format that, uh, we wanna have it come to us and get the appropriate data that we need to make our basic, high level decisions on the budget. So I want to hear from anybody who has any, uh, change in the way the budget has been presented to the board, uh, for the past, uh, 15 years that I'm aware of in terms of the budget book and, uh, so forth. Mr. Bacher.
Can you just talk me up, um, an example of what, um, what it's been like in the past? Is this on the website or?
Yes, it's on the website and it's essentially every budget book you've ever seen published with the district in the past 10 to 15 years. Those kind of binders and those, that kind of little bit of information. Ms. Hyde.
Can you just give me maybe to the end of the week to, to review everything? I know I made notes, I just have to go back. I'd appreciate that. And I'll email, um, Ms. Bursel.
Well, I'm looking for anything right now that would cause any major change.
I can't think of anything major, but I know that I made notes of things that I would like to see presented a certain way. So that's why I'm just asking if I have time to review my notes. I wasn't prepared to be asked this question tonight.
Well, I mean, we only have two weeks until we have to.
I will get it to you as soon as possible, I swear.
Well, uh, like I said, uh, anything that's gonna make any major changes in the budget book, we have to have a decision of the board.
I might not have anything.
Well, I know that. But if we're gonna change anything major, we have to have a decision of the board.
Well, yes.
And that's what requires that meeting. So if we're gonna have the budget book in two weeks, we gotta give some interim direction to the staff right now of as to what that budget book is gonna look like.
Wednesday.
Now, he's saying that that's, it requires a board resolution.
Yeah.
We have to discuss it now.
If it's any major changes, it's gonna.
Not gonna be major changes, might be like a line item, how I wanted.
Okay, uh, we'll consider that a minor change. That's not.
Yeah, I'm not thinking of any major changes, but I, I, there is a couple ways that I, I think would be easier for us to view and read.
Okay, Ms. Donches.
I was asking to, to review my stuff. Thank you.
I would like for the most part, I don't know how far this can go for preliminary budget, um, I, the fund account, the function, the object, the funding source, and the instructional organization.
Um, are you aware that there's, that's something like, uh, 3,899 items?
Um, it has to be put together anyway correctly, I mean, correct.
Not in the way the budget form is, uh, Ms. Sertable, could you explain how the budget is rolled up?
Individual line items are brought to us from the principals and from the central office supervisors in a format that comes to about 3,900, 3,900 line accounts. And then it's a software program that we use. Finance rolls that into the function, object reporting that we currently use in our budget book. And the object reports are used to develop the category analysis that we currently use. We don't compare all those different line item accounts. It, I will take a whole lot of, of paper and I think it's much better to look at summary categories and if you have a question of a certain category, then we can look into a line item for that.
Is that, I think that you do that, um, on the, the roll up on the object codes, that we can see that across all, that all the functions connect?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The, um, the object codes, like the 230, the 240, the 260, those you could roll up and see across the 1,100, the 1,200, the 1,300, or you can see them all together. Um, so we could see 230 or 240 across all the functions at one time. I think you may already provide that. Isn't there a certain format that's required? I thought I remembered.
We use the, the state format.
That's what I did.
Is what we have in the budget book. It's sub, um, sub-major object, seven major functions. So it's like 1,100, 100, 200, 300, and through the 800s. And then it's 1,200, 100, 200, 300, 400, which is what we have in the budget book. Uh, we have show you a history, show the current budget, and we show the new budget. We do that in addition to the category analysis that we think is a better way of looking things because it identifies certain line items that are combined that are like and could be compared.
But once we receive the preliminary budget in that state format, if we have questions as far as, for the breakdown, would we ever ask you about them?
Absolutely.
Mr. Enshaw.
Uh, I think if, if I heard correctly, Ms. Donches asked to see the funding source of every line item on the budget. Was, was that correct? Did I hear that correctly, Mr. Ballard?
I, oh, you had to ask Ms. Donches.
I, I have to address my comments to the chairs.
So, Ms. Donches, was that a correct interpretation of what you asked for?
Well, the fund being that first number on that long, uh, code, but I understand that finding is a much more regular, a little bit.
Well, I just wanna understand because the, the district has several sources of funding. Property taxes, real estate transfer taxes, state sources, federal sources, and you go down to very specific things like the, uh, the federal Title I funds and federal Title II funds. Some of those are very clearly earmarked by statute on how they can be used. The Title II funds can only be used for staff development, professional development. But other funds, we don't say, well, .008 mils is going to pay for this and .03 mils is going to pay for that of, of the real estate tax. So I'm just trying to understand what it was you were asking for.
Um, basically I like the most detail that we can get. And I think in the revenue side, that's pretty, even on what we've been given so far, the revenue is really detailed enough. Um, it was with the expenditures and appropriations that, um, I thought that might be interesting. But I understand what you're saying and I'm all looking for that detail.
Well, uh, yes.
I, I, I'm just trying to understand exactly what, what Ms. Donches was asking for. So, you know, Mr. Ballard, you're asking for direction from the board. I, I have to understand exactly what she wants to say, view in my mind, whether it seems like a reasonable use of district personnel's time to provide it. You know, if this is something that is going to take them an extra 20 minutes to, to compile some of the information she wants, sure, that, that's reasonable. If it's an extra 35 hours, well, no, that's not reasonable given the timeframes we're, we're looking at. But I, I don't understand exactly what the request is.
Well, let, let me just talk about the math that, that was concerning me. Knowing there are 3,899 items, if one board member was to ask for one minute of explanation for every one of those 3,899, uh, items, that would be, uh, approximately, um, 64 hours, wall to wall time with nothing absolutely else done in between. That's, uh, eight full working days out of somebody's task assignment. And we're asking people to get this budget out and they've already got other things to do besides the budget. So my concern is, is that we get the maximum utilization out of the people that we're paying the salaries to, to, uh, compile the budget and give us the highest level numbers because we're gonna have enough trouble making the policy decisions, let alone have to deal with small numbers. Uh, as, uh, I won't pick on anybody here, but sometime before in another meeting, somebody was talking about saving a thousand dollars here and a thousand dollars here. Well, in order to save a million dollars, you gotta save a thousand of thousands. You gotta find a thousand things to find. And of course with 38, or sorry, 68, 99, uh, items, you can go, uh, looking for a thousand things to find, but if it went into the top, you're gonna take, like I said, 64 solid hours just to even look at that thing. So my question is, is this anything that's going to require, uh, a significant extra staff work on this budget? When they got enough problems as it is, we need to identify it now and the board's gotta agree. Is there any such request?
I guess if Ms. Sertable, uh, understands what it is that I asked them.
If there's something that don't understand, all of us will try to pitch in and of course we got all the staff here when we have the meetings.
Can I make a request that we provide it in the format? And it's, there's, I mean, it seems like there was an understanding that if there's a question about any of the categories, you can get more detail rather than providing detail for categories you might not be interested in. Maybe that would be a way to handle that.
I just point out that this is the busy season for the finance office. There's a lot of things with tax, things going on and all kinds of other things. So we gotta keep these requests down to something reasonable in order to get our work done in the office. Is there any other new business to come?
Just one comment on that. The, the challenge with, with asking for the specifics, so if some board member comes up with 18 items and wants the details and some other board member comes up with five and some other, if suddenly it, although five might not be a big deal. other, if suddenly, although five might not be a big deal to come up with the details, you add it all up, and you've got, you know, 130 of them, or 200 of them, we could quickly get into the realm of the unreasonable. What I've found in, in my, my own work, I work with large data sets a lot. Sometimes, you know, 20 to, well, recently I had a spreadsheet with 60,000 rows of data. You can't make sense of any individual line item. You can't look at it and read through it and come up with any sense. You have to create summaries. You have to look at trends. You have to look at pair pieces of it. And I think the budget, the way it's been presented, has given us a great view of that. We've had things like trends of spending from year to year in categories like special education, regular education, textbooks, technology. We've looked at revenue breakdowns. I think what we've been given is fully adequate for us as a board to make policy decisions. Now, it's not adequate for us to pick apart individual expenses, but that's not the role of a board. It's not the role of a board to say, well, at West Coastville Elementary School, I think they're spending too much on textbooks. That's not our job. That's the job of the administrators that we hire to run the buildings, and the job of the superintendent to manage them. And if we're dissatisfied with the results in aggregate, or we are not satisfied with the process that's being followed, or we're not satisfied with the carrying out of our policy wishes, then our job is to work with these employees we directly supervise, the superintendent, to correct those things. It's not our job to say, well, I think you should buy 32 pencils instead of 38 pencils for classroom number seven at the school. I would be opposed to providing reams and reams of detail and burdening our staff with that unless someone has a legitimate concern after looking at the high levels that the trends are wrong and the board's directives as far as policy are not being followed.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Earnshaw, any other comments?
I would just say then that if anybody has anything they want to see in the budget, they need to get it to Ms. Burzl by the end of the week so that the finance office has a chance to react to it, and Dr. Seidenberger will decide whether or not there's a major financial impact or power impact or something like that, and get back to all of us if there's any problem. Is that satisfactory to the board?
Okay, is there any other new business to come before the board? None appearing. We had a clear session for this meeting to discuss real estate personnel and negotiations and legal matters.
I think we had it in real estate, did we?
Uh, no. We did deal with a matter of confidentiality. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn? Some of...
Right here.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned.[1083.04]